10, 2021, the time is now 6:13. We apologize for being a little late. We were finishing up an executive session in another virtual room. Due to concerns over exposure to COVID-19, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. First up, item number one here, we have a moment of silence. Let's just take a few minutes to, a couple moments, have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next up, we have item number three here, which is the meeting minutes. Tonight, I will be assisted by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Hello, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move approval of city council meeting minutes, item 3A, 1 and 2.
It's been moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage for the approval of meeting minutes 3A, 1 through 2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That motion passes seven to zero. Next up here, we're going to go to the acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for the acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes, item 3B, 1 through 10.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage for the acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes, items 3B, 1 through 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item four, which is reports and announcements. First off, our mayor's reports and announcements. I've got a few this evening. Please, we'll go ahead and bring up the screen here. The 2021 Bike Hero Award, the Tempe Bike Hero Award recognizes individuals and organizations that aid in increasing awareness of bicycling and promoting bicycling as a viable mode of transportation in Tempe. This year, the Tempe Transportation Commission received several competitive nominations and chose to select two recipients, Melissa Mahon and John Dollar. Melissa is a member of the Welcome to America Project, a nonprofit organization that collects household goods for refugee moms. Her job includes helping to expand refugee employment possibilities by eliminating two barriers, limited access to transportation and technology. Melissa plays a key role in securing bicycles for refugees to accelerate their self-sufficiency and help connect them to their new community. Her work at the Welcome to America Project has resulted in helping 300 adults and children get bicycles so that they can get to worker school, visit with friends, run errands, and connect with the community. Such amazing work, Melissa. I just wanted to say thank you very much for being part of our community. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woods.
So, and now a little bit about John. John Dollar is the president of the Rob Dollar Foundation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting safety and awareness in memory of his son, Rob. The foundation is working to make roadways a safer place to bike, starting with the South Mountain Park scenic road where Rob's fatal accident occurred. In collaboration with the city of Phoenix, the Rob Dollar Foundation is working on a five-year project to implement safety measures for cyclists on the South Mountain Main Road, which will include signs, convex traffic mirrors, and other measures to ensure greater safety. The foundation also plans to collaborate with local schools and universities to promote existing bike safety courses and programs. I wanted to thank John very much and congratulations on being a 2021 Tempe Bike Hero.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored for receiving this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank both Melissa and John for their dedication and commitment to improving both bicycle safety and accessibility. Congratulations to you both. Next up is item number two, the Girl Scout Patch Winner. And so for this item, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Dorian Garland, who initiated this fun Girl Scout Patch program. But before I do, I want to share that I had the great privilege of meeting the winner of the Patch Design Contest just this morning. I had a lot of fun getting to know Lila, and I can't wait for everyone to see her patch design. But I don't want to steal too much of Councilmember Garland's thunder, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Councilmember Garland.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So in March, we met with the Girl Scouts Arizona Cactus Pine Council to discuss the possibility of a Tempe-specific Girl Scout Patch. And it would be the first city-specific patch in Arizona. And at our first meeting, we knew that we needed artwork for the patch, and we decided to have a patch design contest. We ended up with so many wonderful designs that it made it hard for our selection committee to decide on our three finalists, which are from Lila, and Jania, and Sophia. And I think we have those pictures. I think we have a slide for the pictures. Let's see if we get there. You are. Those are our three finalists. Thank you very much for putting that up. We then published the three finalists on our city website for a public vote, and I have the great pleasure to announce, although the mayor just said it, Lila, a second grader from Tempe, won the design contest. And I think we have her slide with just her picture. Congratulations, Lila. And I wanted to read to you what Lila wrote when she turned in her design. Quote, "I hike the ASU mountain with my mom a lot, and I really love Tempe Town Lake. So I thought it would be cool if I added some of my favorite stuff in Tempe. Tempe is where I grew up and started Girl Scouts. So I love Tempe as much as Tempe loves Girl Scouts," unquote. As a past Girl Scout, Tempe Girl Scout leader, I would have loved a patch from Tempe that I could use to teach our youth more about the city that they live in. This patch program will teach some history about Tempe, including our indigenous culture and our founders. It will also take you around the city to have fun and explore the outdoor places that we have here. You will also learn about our city government and how Tempe works. And there will be lots of things to do for girls and kids of all ages. We will be getting more information about the patch program specific soon, and you can keep up with the progress and get the more information at tempe.gov/patch. I also want to say thank you to our staff for their help, which includes Nikki, Donna, and Elizabeth, who were past Girl Scouts. I also want to thank Peggy Maroney, a Tempe leader, who encouraged me to move forward with this idea. And finally, I want to give a shout out to the Tempe Girl Scouts Cactus Pine Council for being just as excited about this project as I was. And now we, Tempe, are the first city-specific Girl Scout Patch in Arizona. So thank you again to all the artists who submitted designs. Thank you to our three finalists, and congratulations again to Lila. And Mayor, I will turn it back to you, showing you that right now I pulled out my Girl Scout banner from when I was a Girl Scout, and I'm showing that off tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Garland. Really appreciate it. Thank you for the idea and, you know, making us, you know, yet another first in the state of Arizona. And once again, congratulations to Lila. It was a pleasure meeting you. And we are, I know at one point, you, when we talked this morning, you talked about not only coming back to City Hall, but bringing the entire troop with you, so myself and Councilmember Garland and the rest of the council could meet you in person. So we definitely look forward to taking you up on that opportunity. So congratulations. All right, next up here, we, my last item is the Juneteenth Proclamation. So as we all know, Juneteenth recalls the day in 1865, when word of emancipation finally reached enslaved people in Texas and the last slaves were freed. Today, I would like to read the city's Juneteenth Proclamation, recognizing this important day in our history. But before doing so, I wanted to turn it over to City Manager Andrew Ching to let everyone know about some of the things that the city is doing this year to recognize and celebrate Juneteenth. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. A couple things. First of all, we made the decision as staff here to make sure that, that we provided the opportunity for our employees here at the city to take time off to celebrate Juneteenth as a vacation day. So what we did was, we created a special floating holiday day that employees could use during a, the week before and the week after Juneteenth, which is this next Saturday, June 19th, to take the time to not just have a day off from work, but to really commemorate it and to celebrate either with activities or in remembrance as to the significance of the Juneteenth holiday. This was done in conjunction with our six-sided partnership, working with our senior management team, and especially with the newly-created Tempe Black Employees Alliance, TBEA, that started last year, 2020, as a group of employees who had a special interest to try to represent and to bring forward issues of concern by black employees here at the city of Tempe. And I'm just especially proud of the leadership of that group in assisting me and the rest of the city in coming to a conclusion as to what would be a fitting way this year to, to recognize and celebrate Juneteenth. And I'll specially mention by name the co-founders, which is Lisa Groom from the city manager's office and with Community Services, Kelly Taylor. There's a lot of other folks who have also been very instrumental in that, but I wanted to let those two great employees know how much we appreciate what they've done. In addition, this coming, not this coming Friday, excuse me, next Friday, June 18th, the day before Juneteenth, since it falls on a weekend, there will be events and celebration at the library complex here at the city of Tempe. So we have a bunch of information about that available on our website, and we'll be happy to, to provide that upon request as well. But there will be a Juneteenth celebration. We have also done that in the past. Last year, of course, with the pandemic in full swing, in 2020, it was not able to be done as much in person. But given the trends that we're experiencing right now, we are going to have an in-person event at the library complex on June 18th. So thank you, Mayor Woods, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of council, for your support of our commemoration of this very important holiday.
Great. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Really appreciate it. With that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, formally abolishing slavery, and on June 19th, 1865, after two and a half years, the executive decree was finally fully enforced throughout the Confederate states when Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas to ensure all enslaved people were declared legally free. And whereas Juneteenth has been called the Second Independence Day for the United States, and began a post-emancipation period where formerly enslaved people began the brutal journey of reunifying families, obtaining education, acquiring private property, and running for elected office. And whereas Juneteenth is a day on which we, as a society, pay honor to those Americans who were enslaved and recognize the evils of slavery and how its aftermath has shaped our nation. And whereas Juneteenth is also a day of reflection and renewal, as we show appreciation for the many valuable contributions and sacrifices made by African-Americans to our society. And whereas the Tempe African-American Advisory Committee, through the support of the Tempe History Museum, the Tempe Black Employee Alliance, and the Strategic Management and Diversity Office, work together to celebrate Juneteenth and honor our state and nation's strong African-American heritage and remember the lives of those who were enslaved as part of that history. And whereas the transformative work of equity, inclusion, and reform must be shared by all in order to ensure the unalienable rights of all people to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Tempe re-commits itself to the values of inclusion, equity, justice, and reform in recognition of this important day in our country's history. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as an official city holiday, June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth in Tempe, Arizona. I know we also have Michelle Brooks-Totris and Kim Dartes on the line from the African-American Advisory Committee, who I would like to provide the opportunity to say a few words. Michelle and Kim?
Michelle, I'm going to unmute you so you can speak.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor. I was muted there. They just unmuted me. Thank you for the opportunity. Unfortunately, Commissioner Kim Dartes was not able to make the meeting today, but we would like to invite everyone out to the Juneteenth event, as City Manager said, will be this Friday. The festival is a celebration of black history in Tempe, because Juneteenth is American history and city of Tempe history as well. We'll be having information tables. We'll be having food vendors. And we're excited this year. We have partnered with the Tempe Fire Medical and Rescue Unit Department, as well as the Maricopa County Health Department, to offer Pfizer vaccinations. And they're free on a first-come, served basis for ages 12 and up. So we would like to ask all of Tempe to come out, support this holiday. And our theme for this year is Juneteenth, the Hidden Agenda, because there is a hidden agenda that was as part of that proclamation. So we want everyone to come out and learn more and celebrate with us. And we look forward to your presence. Thank you, Mayor Woods.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for all of your hard work, and Kim, and everyone else who's make, who continues to make African-American history a prominent part of not only Tempe history, but America's history. So thank you so much for everything you've done and continue to do on behalf of our community. So I just want to remind everyone that, yes, this, a week from tomorrow, June 18th, we have our Juneteenth celebration. I know I'll be there, and I know we look forward to seeing all of you there. So thank you so much, Michelle. All right, let's see. Next up here, we have item 4B, City Manager's Report to the Announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I do have a couple of announcements. First, I will turn it over to staff to provide an electric vehicle charging update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Grace Delmonte-Kelly, Energy Manager in the Engineering and Transportation Department. Thank you for the opportunity to give an update about the new electric vehicle charging projects in the city. Next slide. This work aligns with the following city council's strategic priorities. Number 1.27, to achieve 100% compliance with industry standards related to the replacement or rehabilitation of infrastructure and assets. And numbers 4.19 and 4.18, to achieve municipal and community-wide carbon neutrality. Electric vehicle charging is also one of the 12 actions in the Climate Action Plan. I'm here to take, today to talk about moving forward with electric vehicle charging infrastructure. It's important to acknowledge the people involved. Our thanks to Mayor and council for your leadership and resources. We are thankful to the utilities, SRP, and APS for financial and technical assistance. It would not have been possible without them. There was collaboration across the city with staff from municipal utilities, fleet, facilities, engineering and transportation, sustainability, procurement, and the city attorney's office. Fleet and facility staff worked hard to coordinate contractors, construction, and equipment, and we appreciate all their work. These are the electric vehicle charging stations that were installed at the library. Several years ago, Blink EV charging stations were installed at the library as part of a federal grant. They did not have a dedicated electrical line, so in recent years, the chargers were tripping a breaker or not working well. A few months ago, SRP staff met with city staff and offered to cover the cost to upgrade the EV chargers and add more charging stations through EV rebates. This slide shows the before-and-after photos. On the left are three single-port Blink EV chargers in front of the library. They could charge up to three cars a time, at a time, and they were solely for public use. On the right are three new dual-port ChargePoint EV chargers. They can charge up to six cars at a time. They are dual-purpose and can charge both public and fleet electric vehicles. They are faster, more reliable, and cost less to charge than the previous units. SRP rebates covered the cost for the new pedestal, new transformer, and new EV chargers. The estimated cost of the project was nearly $50,000. SRP has been an incredible partner, and we appreciate all the work they are doing to help the city meet our sustainability goals. Next slide. This shows the before-and-after photos of the EV charger at the library by the book drop. This was previously a public charger and can now charge fleet cars as well. The library project is important because it helps to move the needle on council's goals for both municipal and community-wide carbon neutrality. Next slide. The city is participating in the Arizona Public Service Take Charge EV Program. APS will pay for the cost of installing EV infrastructure and four EV chargers at the Hardy Maintenance Yard. The Hardy Yard project is in the design and permitting phase and should be completed by October. APS will also cover the costs of installing EV charging infrastructure for up to four fleet electric cars in the Orchid House parking garage. We are in the design phase for this project. Next slide. The city currently has 18 fleet electric vehicles and 28 fleet electric vehicle charging stations. The additional APS EV chargers will bring the total fleet charging stations up to 36. With the new SRP library chargers, Tempe now has a total of 10 public EV charging stations at city locations. Next slide. For the next steps, last year, city staff issued an RFP for Fleet EV Infrastructure Fusibility Study. Staff selected a consultant, entered into a contract, and is working with the consultant to provide an assessment of the electrical capacity at all city facilities. In this next upcoming budget, there's money for a comprehensive city fleet EV roadmap. And there are funds in next year's budget to begin a community EV roadmap, to make sure Tempe is planning for EV infrastructure across the city that supports our businesses and residents. Next slide. Thank you for all your support in the city's electric vehicle charging station projects. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you so much, Grace. Let me go here and see if there are any comments or questions from council. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm super excited about the progress that we've made on electric vehicles and promoting the program, so all of our residents can come down and, and charge if they're at the library. There are vehicles in various places in the city. So I appreciate moving forward with this, the electric vehicles and making them more accessible for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember QB?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Grace. Thank you for all your hard work. And it's so inspiring to see the city working with the university, working with the utilities, all to, all of the goal of electrification. I know that we kind of quietly, in unheralded, in an unheralded way, I think we have the most electrical, electric vehicles in our fleet in the state of Arizona, I think amongst the 20 cities that we looked at. So I thank you for being a part of that, and I hope you continue to lead the state. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Any of the council members, any comments or questions for Grace? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much, Grace. Really appreciate the presentation. Great work, as always. Mr. City Manager, anything else?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to go ahead and have Alex and Kara share their screen. We are very pleased and proud to once again this year announce the winners of the James Alexander Scholarship Competition that is sponsored by and hosted by the Tempe Professional Development Network. This scholarship was created in recognition of former Tempe City Manager James Alexander. Mr. Alexander devoted his career to fostering excellence and professionalism in city government. The Tempe Professional Development Network was created as a result of his efforts. Up to two scholarships in the amount of $1,000 each are awarded each year with any high school senior who is the child of a benefited, full or part-time city of Tempe employee eligible to apply. This year, we have two very worthy recipients. The first I will mention is Mason Kaminsky. His slide is up on the screen. Mason just graduated from Veritas Repertory Academy and is the child of Diana Kaminsky in the Planning Division of Community Development. Mason plans on attending the University of Arizona, Bear Down, Mason, in the fall, majoring in neuroscience and going on to medical school to become a neurologist. Our second recipient, whose slide will be coming up here in just a second, is Olivia Fisher. Olivia Fisher is a recent graduate of McClintock High School, Go Chargers, and is a child of Elizabeth Thomas in the Neighborhood Services Division, also in community development. Olivia plans to attend Northern Arizona University in the fall, majoring in exercise science, with the eventual goal of becoming a doctor of physical therapy. And knowing Olivia as I do through the years, having her go to school for quite a few years with my own son, I know that she is capable of a lot of greatness. And we are wishing both Olivia and Mason well in their college careers. And we're very excited that they were selected as the recipients of this year's Alexander Scholarships. So congratulations to both of them. I understand that they are both either watching or in attendance tonight. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. The public may also submit written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System on tempe.gov/clerk. The Consent Agenda is as reads miscellaneous items 5A1, awards of bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B7, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C4. Any item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. Council members, are there any agenda items that you'd like to have removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Some.
Moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The Consent Agenda is approved, seven to zero. Next up, we're going to go to, let's see here. Trying to get through my pages here. All right, now, item number six. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. All right, here we go. Item 6A1, the first item under the section, is to hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution levying the fiscal year 2021, 2022, annual assessment for the city of Tempe, downtown Tempe, Enhanced Services Improvement District, ruling on objections, making corrections, approving a new district map, and approving modified assessments. Would staff like to make a statement on this item? All right, hearing none. Were there, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor Woods.
Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a motion on item 6A1.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Councilmember Adams, second? Moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Garland. I will call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 6A2, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with G4S Secure Solutions Incorporated to provide security officer services for various city departments. Would staff like to make a statement on this item? Hearing none, council, are there any comments or discussion? Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hear from Tom Dunzing. I think our residents have had questions about the contract, and there's, you know, the national international group that owners that had some suspect behaviors, and we always look to their local context too in our experience with G4S. And that, so I would think it would be great if Tom Dunzing could come to the stage and just sort of give us a background about how we looked into that, because staff was really thorough and robust in the way they approached this, because council had a lot of concerns, and we wanted to make sure that our residents felt comfortable with this decision from today.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember QB. Mayor and council, good evening. Tom Dunzing, Director or Deputy Director of Internal Services over Finance. Before you tonight is the contract renewal with G4S. It is a one-year renewal through June 30, 2022. To address Councilmember QB's questions, back in December of 2018, there were concerns raised regarding certain allegations against G4S, or pardon me, against Allied Universal. Within your council report this evening, it does indicate that our current contract provider, G4S, is getting acquired by Allied Universal. So when we got the contract notice, staff immediately reached out to G4S and asked G4S to address certain concerns that were alleged back in December 2018. Based on these allegations, I would say a couple things. The first thing is Allied Universal took these allegations very seriously. They responded, we reached out on April 15th. On May 7th, they had a comprehensive response to certain incidents that happened, namely at JF, John F. Kennedy Airport back in New York. G4S also outlined for us the programs put in place, the avenues that their employees have to raise issues with management, and how they intend to address issues. I will say G4S is a very large employer. In fact, they're the third-largest employer in the United States and the seventh-largest employer in the world with over 800,000 employees after the acquisition. The acquisition is effective in September of this year. We reached out to G4S to inquire about the level of service, because frankly, we've been very satisfied with the level of service that we've received. The response we got back was Tempe and the residents of Tempe and the staff in Tempe, we should see no changes in service. They are simply assuming the contract. They vindicated they will keep staff that they currently have here, so it should be a fairly seamless transition. There is a representative, Ms. Tammy Mixon, Vice President of G4S, if council has questions. Other than that, I appreciate the chance to speak to you tonight, and I'd be certainly happy to answer any other questions.
Great, Tom, thank you so much. Any other members of council, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, if there are no other further comments, I would look for a motion on item 6A2.
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'll call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Okay, I vote aye.
I vote aye. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
No worries. Okay, great. That item passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. The next item on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The only item under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second and final hearing for this item is scheduled for June 24, 2021. So next, we've got item 6B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain city-owned improved property at the addresses of 2697 East Silk Oak Drive, 2026 East Lemon Street, 616 South Hardy Drive, Unit 137, 1029 West Fifth Street, Unit 103, and 2725 South Rural Road, Units 11, 14, 21, 35, and 36, to the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. Is, would staff like to make a statement on this item?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor. Council, this is Levon Mayne, Housing Services Manager for Tempe. Item 6B1 is an administrative process. This is taking units that have been acquired through the affordable housing acquisition to create permanently affordable and workforce housing units. They are acquired utilizing some CVVG funds or other funds, and with this, we are administratively moving them to the affiliate for property management and maintenance purposes. This also impresses the properties with the deeds, covenants, and restrictions so that they are permanently affordable rental units that cannot be disposed of. This also can create some in-kind match for other programs that Housing Services runs, and we're available for any questions.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Levon. Really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item?
No input for this item, Mayor Woods.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for June 24, 2021. All right, next up, we have items for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were initially read and introduced on May 27, 2021, and votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item under the section is 6C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located in the development south of Baseline Road on Kyrene Road. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor, there was not.
Wonderful, okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion on item 61.
Some moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. I will go ahead and call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor, sorry.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C1 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 21, nuisances and property enhancement of the Tempe City Code for the removal of the phrase "slumlike." Would staff like to make a statement on this item? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item or any request to address the council?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on that one. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 62 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the dedication of certain city-owned land and identified by APN 124-68-097 with a property address of 707 West 10th Street for use as public right-of-way and authorizing the city engineer to execute a declaration memorializing such dedication and related documents. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, looks like I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C3 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned property identified by APN 133-41-349A at 655 East Southern Avenue, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? If there are none, I'd look for a motion on item 6C4.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sounds like a second by Councilmember Adams. I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. The next item?
Mr. Mayor, can someone get, can someone get the Vice Mayor a lozenge?
A little, maybe a little later.
Sound scratchy.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. The next item under the section is item 65, which is to hold the second and final hearing to adopt an ordinance for a co-text amendment for group home regulations consisting of changes within Section 3-409 of the Zoning and Development Code for modifications and update to group home standards and related definitions. The applicant is the City of Tempe. Would staff like to make a statement on this item?
Mayor Woods?
Yes, Ryan?
Yes, this is Ryan LeVek, City of Tempe Community Development Deputy Director in the Planning Division. I have no additional statements at this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, sounds good. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No public input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, I will look for a motion on item 65. Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 65 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 9 of the Tempe City Code relating to administration, boards, commissions, et cetera, by amending Section 2-255 and 258 relating to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. Would staff like to make a statement on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember? Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'll call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is item 6C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain city-owned improved property at the addresses of 1226 East Spence, 1230 East Spence, 1234 East Spence, 4001 South Parkside Circle, 2725 South Rural Road, Unit 19, and 700 West University, Units 102, 104, 109, 139, and 144, to the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. Would staff like to make a statement on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Levon Mayne, Housing Services Manager for City of Tempe. For item 6C7, this is the second and final public hearing to move the first batch of units from the city into the affiliate with the deeds, covenants, and restrictions for the permanently, permanently affordable rental and permanently affordable workforce housing units that would be administered and property managed by the affiliate. This transfer also may generate in-kind match for some of our other programs, and we're available for any questions.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Levon. Really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item or any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, I will look for a motion on item 6C7.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C7 passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is to hold, is item 6C8, hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with Hardy Rio Development Company, LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
We do have Wendy Rydel, who requested to speak, and no additional public input.
Okay, sounds good. Wendy, whenever you're ready, go ahead. I, we can't, I see you, but you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only need to speak if there's any questions.
Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, I will go ahead and look for a motion then on item 68.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
I second it, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. I'll take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yeah.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 68 passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 69, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to amend Chapter 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to administration, Chapter 26A relating to procurement, and the city code generally, dissolving the Internal Services Department, establishing the Financial Services Department, Human Resources Department, and the Information Technology Department. This amends the city code generally to reflect that the Internal Services Department will be known as either the Financial be known as either the Financial Services Department or the Human Resources Department, and the Internal Services Director will be known as either the Financial Services Director or the Human Resources Director. Would staff like to make a statement? Okay. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item or any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Devaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I will call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 69 passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item number seven, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm going to go ahead and call on councilmembers for their comments. Tonight, I'm going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I used to go on first, but here we go. I'm ready now. Okay. So I have a couple announcements. One is June is Garbologist Month. So thank you to the Solid Waste staff for keeping Tempe clean by collecting solid waste and recycling each week. So I know that we have some yard signs out there that we can put out, so please put your yard signs up now. So thank you very much. And I have a second announcement, and that is Tempe Time Machine returns the summer with more fun for the whole family. As part of Tempe's 150th birthday, Tempe Time Machine will offer take-home kits to help the whole family celebrate together. Kits can be picked up at the Tempe History Museum. That's 809 East Southern Avenue, right next to the library on Southern and Rural. They can be picked up every Wednesday between June 9th and July 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. New kits will be available each week while supplies last. So visit www tempe.gov/ timemachine for details. Thanks, and have a good month.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, I've got Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Cubey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Greg is going to start a video, but before he does that, I just want to introduce the topic. And so, as you very well know, Mr. Mayor, because you were there yesterday, Habitat for Humanity, Central Arizona, is building its first 3D-printed home in the United States. And it's a custom home, single-family home facing Clark Park, and it's under construction. It's a lot owned by the city. That's been our partnership model with Habitat, and it combines 3D printing and traditional construction. I think like eighty or something percent is 3D printing of concrete, and it's creating an innovative model for the future of scalable, cost-effective homeownership and facing the affordable housing crisis. It's so important that we innovate and find lower-cost materials, because we know material costs are going up. There's already interest in the university maybe looking at polymer-based recycling of plastic bottles to create 3D polymer walls, which is another exciting development that could very well happen here in our own city. So it's very exciting. And I want to thank, though, all of the people that have been involved in the city of Tempe, because it's not easy to innovate sometimes. There's a lot of different rules that have to be adjusted, and it's not easy. Let's just say that. And Shelley Seiler, Ryan Levesque, Diane Kaminsky, Naomi Farrell, Paula Bentley, Levon Lamy, Alex Smith, and our Historic Preservation Officer, John Sutherland, had a lot to do with smoothing this process and making it happen. The 3D printer came in from Germany, and they had never done this process in an arid environment. And you can imagine, concrete doesn't cure as easily in Arizona as it does in Germany. The heat is very intense here. So I also want to, last but not least, thank Stephen Metzfin, our Deputy City Manager. He was such a problem solver throughout this entire project, and I just want to salute him for all the work that he did in leading Tempe to be such an effective partner. And just one more thing, Habitat for Humanity has had a very strong relationship in Tempe for decades, and a lot of that traces back to the Ramsey Justice Foundation, and Jenny Norton, and Bob Ramsey, and all the work they've done with Habitat in Escalante Neighborhood in La Victoria, and not just Habitat for Humanity work, but energy-efficient work and solar-powered homes. And so they've done so much to lead the sustainable, affordable models in Tempe. So with that, if you could just share this short video from Habitat, we can celebrate this important innovation that's happening right here, right now, in our city. Thank you.
If we could significantly reduce cost, time it takes to build a home, and the waste, it will be a game changer. So today, we'd like to announce that Habitat for Humanity is building the first 3D-printed home in the United States.
Tempe is really known for innovation, and this 3D-printed home aligns perfectly with our goal to identify new solutions that accelerate the growth of affordable housing right here in our city. We started on this project since its inception with the challenge of taking one of Habitat's standard three-bedroom, two-bath house plants and adapting it for this 3D-printed technology.
When completed, this will be the first 3D-printed house in the United States that has met all of the following milestones in 3D construction. All of the interior and exterior walls, and even the base of the breakfast bar, are 3D printed. It is fully permitted by a municipality, with all electrical and plumbing in the walls, just like a traditional wood-framed house. This house will become the home for an entire family. That family will be the first family to live in a 3D-printed home in the United States.
We are delighted to deliver this milestone in one of the world's largest residential markets with an organization like Habitat for Humanity.
This fall, I can't wait to see these four houses completed, meet the homeowners, and see how their lives are permanently transformed through affordable homeownership.
Thank you so much. Great video. Councilmember Cubey, does that conclude your announcements?
Ah, yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Devaro?
Thank you, Mayor. First, that 3D-printed video was great. I can't wait to see this finished product. It's really intriguing. So kudos to Tempe being the first. Got a slide. So I know Councilmember Arredondo Savage touched on this topic last week, but I want to bring it up again. In the last two months alone, we've had more drownings than we did in 2020. We know that the temperatures are rising, and it burdenly means that we're looking to cool off in our personal or community pools. It really breaks my heart to know that we have had five drownings in the last two months. This is five too many lives lost, five families that forever will be affected, and five more than we should have happened. I wish our community and our first responders didn't have to endure such tragedy, so please make sure you practice water safety. Designate at least one person responsible to watch the kids in the water. Kids can slip into water within two seconds, and it only takes two inches of water for someone to drown. So please make sure after... You look after your children in our community. In addition, I also want to say we've had about 15% more fires per day. Please make sure that you have a working smoke detector in your house, and please make sure you're not leaving food unattended. Make sure... And the reason why is that's one of the highest causes of fires. And then also make sure you have two means of escape throughout your house. And truly, practice a plan with your kids. It's kind of like a fire drill that you do at home, but have a discussion with your kids on how to get out, especially the room or the house, and where you guys are going to meet up when you get out of the house. Those are really important. So we've seen them just lately, and please make sure with both of those examples, watch your kids, especially around the water, and then make sure that we're doing our due diligence on making sure we're protecting our home, not burning them down. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Devaro? I don't have any comments this evening. I'm going to move forward to item eight, public appearances. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments for public appearances that were received through our City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System?
Mayor, we do have a request to speak from Logan White, and I do have one card to read into the record after Logan speaks.
All right. Sounds good. We can let's elevate Logan to be a panelist, and Logan, you are good to go whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate you letting us speak this evening. My name is actually Lee Christiansen. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Logan White, regarding a property that's in our neighborhood located at 136 East Fremont Drive. That property, that residential property, sustained a fire in May of 2020, so over a year ago. The house is currently uninhabited by the owner, but there are... I'll use the term loosely, occupants that originally started occupying the garage but have now moved into this property that is still unrepaired, holes in the roof, it's still boarded up. I've had an opportunity to visit with many of the city departments regarding the property, and we're just kind of coming up at a loss, because while the city is trying to do everything they can, it's basically remaining in eyesore. And quite honestly, a danger to our community is these individuals are continually turning the water on when the water company comes and turns it off. They have illegally bypassed the electrical meter, so had some illegal wiring to the property. So SRP has now finally come out and disconnected the power at the power line, and so I was hoping to reach out to the council to find out what, if anything, we can do. I had written down some points, and kind of my closing paragraph was this, and I'll just read it to you, was at what point can and is it possible that the city condemn a property and it become a violation of any of the applicable ordinances and/or laws within the city of Tempe to allow a property such as this to remain in an uninhabitable condition? Not only making it an eyesore to the neighborhood, but it's harboring sketchy individuals who are manipulating the system and breaking laws, having no qualms about stealing utility services and jeopardizing the health and safety of the surrounding homes and their inhabitants, not to mention the amount of city resources that are currently being used to attempt to manage a potentially dangerous situation.
Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I'm just thinking right now, if I can turn to our city attorney, Judy Baumann, are there any statements you might be able to make at this time?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. And Mr. Christiansen, thank you very much for your time this evening. Our office has been made aware of the situation, and we are reviewing just the very questions that you have posed this evening, so I appreciate that. The city also has a multi-departmental group that will be meeting in the next week, week and a half or so, to consider various options and related issues. So thank you for that, and we will be back in touch.
Great. Thank you so much, Judy. Really appreciate it. All right. Next up, Madam Clerk, I think you had one more card?
Yes, Mayor. I have one card to read into the record. It's on behalf of Mr. David Sokolowski, resident of Tempe. He's writing regarding electric vehicle charging. He writes, "Due to various factors like low wages and high rent, 30% of Tempe's population won't have access to electric vehicles, and not even a federal rebate would allow us to qualify for a $20,000 loan. We're not preventing people from switching to electric vehicles, but is this truly an equitable investment? Vehicle miles traveled continues to increase each year, and reducing range anxiety is another way of describing an increase in which vehicle miles traveled. Based on the best information available at this time, the science indicates that we must reduce vehicle miles traveled significantly and as quickly as possible to address the